All right, so hello, my name is Umar Ratnagar. And I'm originally from Sri Lanka, but currently living in the UK. Praveen.
Praveen.
Yeah, so nice to see you, right? Uh yeah, so I was two years back, I was teaching in Sri Lanka in an international school. Uh when I first met your sir online and we had a couple of sessions back then. Uh connecting those students in the international school where I worked and then your teachers, your sir's students as well. Uh then I moved to the UK two years back. Uh to start a new journey. Uh but I never thought that I would get a chance to continue teaching here in the UK. Uh but I was really lucky enough to continue and I was really lucky enough to continue the same subject. That's another another thing I can't really believe. I was teaching computer science back there. Uh and now I am a computer science teacher in in the school that you write, you see right on the picture here. As you can see, it's a it's a massive area, massive facility. And to be honest, I'm really lucky to experience this sort of facilities here in the in the UK, which. Uh we don't really have in our our country. So it's a community school. Uh it's located right here, as you can see in the map. Uh can everybody see the screen?
Yeah, we are everybody.
Right, uh so it's right here in Cambridgeshire. Uh the main city is Cambridge, where where the famous Cambridge University is located. Uh so we are somewhere around one and a half hours drive from Cambridge. Uh so it's a community school which has a long history, more than. More than half a century history. Uh and it's a huge facility, as you can see in the pictures. And there are about thousand three hundred students from year seven to A levels. Uh here A levels is called sixth form, so there are about thousand three hundred students. So let me play this video. I took this from their official website. Uh just to have a go through and see what the school looks like, right? Can you hear the sound?
Yeah, yeah. So really amazing.
Really amazing, yeah, so this is me. Uh in the picture, we we usually have this annual cultural diversity day. Uh so they 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 get, you know, uh students from. Uh friends who are from different countries to to be exact, there are. Uh students from around sixteen different countries, nationalities, speaking sixteen different languages. Uh so I'm there pointing out to my country there. And as you can see, it it it's really interesting because they wanted us to. Uh keep our fingerprint on the country that we represent. We never never had an experience like that before.
Very interesting.
Yeah, very interesting and as you can see, there are some fingerprints on India as well. So that's because we have students from India. In my classes, I have students from from Kerala.
Oh.
Yeah, so a lot of diversities there, a lot of different countries represented. And that's my room, that's my computer lab, as you can see. Uh what you see there, the tiny boards, mini whiteboards that we use to check for their understanding. For example, before we start the lesson, we have a retrieval task. To check whether they know, whether they remember from the previous lesson, so we use this mini whiteboard. Uh it's not like asking questions from different different students. We get everybody to participate and check their understanding. So that is a that is a task that we do in every lesson, whether it is computing or any other subject, we do that, right? Uh so in our lessons, we mainly do. Coding, so in year seven, we do scratch programming to introduce them to coding. And then as they move on, they do more advanced coding like this one. Uh which was done by one of the year nine students recently. So we teach them like coding skills like Python, which which is quite demanding these days. And then we also moved on to things like animation, graphics and things like that, such as this one. We mainly use online resources than, you know, installed software for security reasons. Uh so they enjoy, you know, creating their own animation, two D, three D animations. Uh and it helps us to keep them engaged while, you know, improving their IT skills. And then we also do something called Microbit, which is a single board computer that you can program, it's a single board. Uh with some sensors in it, so they start coding that device and they can use it for scientific experiments as well. Uh then we recently did this project, this is quite interesting. Where they have to create. Uh a pixel art, a pixel art where they have a kind of a, you know. Uh eight by eight grid where they have to code and get a pixel art created. And then the pixel art is sent all the way to the International Space Station where they have a device called Astro Pi. And then what happens is randomly their picture will be displayed in this Astro Pi device, which is used by the astronauts up there. So then what they do is they record the location of the International Space Station at that moment. Uh they take the longitude and latitude and put it into a certificate along with their name, the child's name. And then they send it to us. So that's really interesting because they love to see their art displayed in this International Space Station. So only evidence is that certificate along with the longitude and latitude of the ISS when it was displayed on the screen. Uh so they really like that, uh so that was one of the projects we do every year annually. And recently, we taught them Adobe Illustrator. Uh have you heard about Adobe Illustrator?
No.
Pooja, Praveen.
They don't have that much knowledge about computers, in fact.
Alright, alright, fine, fine, no problem, no problem, right? Uh so it's a it's a graphic tool that we use to draw art on the computer, right? Uh it's called Adobe Illustrator. So what you see here is some drawings that year eight students did recently. Some of these arts, so we we organize their lessons in such a way that they start with the simple tools first. And then they go on to more advanced tools, like with basic shapes and then moving on to. Uh these lines, curved lines, straight lines and things like that, right? Okay, so recently they did this one, the whale's picture, which introduced them to the curved lines. Uh the interesting thing is like we first create, tell them the the technique and then we let them explore on their own. Uh without really, you know, forcing them to. Uh you know, strict guideline or or a sequence. They have the freedom to explore on on their own, select their own picture and create it, some of these. And also, uh in our lessons, in our classes, we have different types of students. Like we have the high ability students and also we have the special needs students. That's that's a that is a new experience for me actually. Uh we have students with different different medical needs, different levels of abilities. And also students from different parts of the world, which who have some difficulty in understanding. That was actually one of the questions you have given to me. Uh so what we do is we design the lesson.
Oh, my my student, sorry to interrupt you, actually, my students, actually, they are they are going to ask you some questions, I mean.
Yeah.
Once once your presentation is completed, okay.
Alright, alright, sir, right. So um uh we have to cater everybody, so we designed our lesson in such a way that. Uh we look at the high achiever as well as the low achiever and the average student as well. So always we have a task as an extension task for the high achievers. Because they they quick, they they tend to finish the task quite earlier than the others. Uh so what we do is we have an extension task for them. So this flag example here is an extension task. So once they finish their project, we ask them to create three flags. Selecting from three different complexities, like as you can see, the Japan flag is quite easy to design. Uh but the Brazil flag is quite difficult. So we ask them to select three different flags and create them as an extension task. So the other pictures are from the from the project that everybody has to complete, right? So that flag one is is an extension task. Right? Yeah, so that's about the school, sir, and and my experience as a computer science teacher here. I'll be completing two years next January. So. Yes.
Thank you so much for your wonderful presentation and may I consider this as a a public school or is it completely a community based school?
Uh yeah, that's a good question, sir. Uh it is a community based school, it's a state state owned school.
Oh, that means it's a public school, can I consider?
It's a public school, it's a public school, yeah.
Wow, so public school has this much infrastructure and all facilities.
There you go, there you go, yeah, that's that was the most amazing thing I experienced in the first place. When I when I came for the, uh actually, I was interviewed online. So when I came here, I had the job. So when I went there for the first time to meet the the principal and and the seniors. I was so amazed because I had never seen such a facility. Uh in a school in our country, so not even, not even, not even the private schools.
In fact, this is Sri Lanka, India, we both are developing countries, we don't have that much infrastructure to support our education system that that too is the public sector.
Exactly, so as you as you can see, right, right here, we have auditorium, we have the classes here. We have the football ground that right there, two football grounds. Uh and we have the gymnasium right here. Uh we have tennis courts, all here, the car park, it's a massive facility.
Wow, absolutely amazing, so is 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 there any process to recruit the teachers across the globe? And to cater the needs of the students in a public sector in the UK? They do they have a policy to recruit the teachers from all out all over the world?
Uh yeah, so as far as I know, what they do is they first give priority to the natives. And then they, you know, publish the vacancies and then if they can't find. Necessary, you know. You know, expert personnel here, they would open the vacancies for for the for the rest of the world.
Yeah.
But then, like with the with the recent changes to. Uh this bringing in foreign workers. Uh now they have set high standards to select these experts into their system. But it is it is it is still open as far as I know.
Yeah.
But but they give the priority to natives first and then they look for the others.
Yeah, so I do understand that how much competition is there for that post because when you're in, when a school like this. Uh is is going to recruit a teacher and they set the high standards and that too they go for a teacher who is efficient. And we who can manage the things as per their expectations, I I would feel that. Uh they have chosen a absolutely amazing teacher like you.
Yeah.
I'm I'm sure that they are lucky and utilize your services.
Yeah, I'm really, really grateful and and we have teachers, we we have teachers from all around the world. Uh we have teachers from Brazil, we have teachers from Nigeria. Uh Caribbean and and even in India, but not in my school, but we have another school like Now Trust, where we have a lot of Indian teachers.
Okay, so I will talk about that and now my students are impacted, yes, let us start with Pooja, Pooja, go ahead and ask him.
Yes, Pooja, yeah.
Hello, sir, my name is Pooja. My name is Pooja, I'm a eighth grader from GBHS Penemaka, may I ask you a question?
Yes, please.
My question, my question is what major difference do you notice between teaching in Sri Lanka? And teaching in the UK in terms of technology use and student engagement?
Uh yes, Pooja, uh so if I talk about the differences is. Uh the main difference is that we have to cater different types of students here. Uh that's the major difference that I see in all our lessons. Uh we have high achievers, high standard students and we have students with different needs. Uh some medical needs as well and then we have students from different parts of the world. So the main thing is that. Uh I need to plan my lesson in such a way that I address everybody. It's not an easy task and I need to support everybody and I need to, you know, raise their standards. Um so lots of breaking down of the lesson has to be done. Uh it is not the content that we are looking at, like we are not trying to put a lot of content on into their heads. We are, we are particularly concerned about their load, cognitive load in their memory. So what we do is we break down the lesson into smaller, smaller parts and then we. Support them, we kind of scaffold them in the sense like. We first demonstrate the new knowledge. We actually start with the checking prior knowledge, previous knowledge using those boards. And then we introduce the new content and then I have to model it in front of the whole class. And then we model it together, like for example, if it is a coding example, we do the code together, getting their feedback. So there's a lot of discussion, there's a lot of discussion, you know, talking going on. Uh it's not just a teacher explains and the students listening, like there's a lot of discussion going on. And then we release them to do the task on their own. That's called the independent phase, silent independent phase, where they try it on their own without our help. So that has to be totally on their own without our help. So that's what scaffolding is all about, we bring them to a certain level that they will be successful on their own. So we didn't have that kind of a system in our country, so that was really new. Uh in fact, I was able to learn these new concepts because I was going through a training for one, one complete year. So that's where we learn all these techniques. Um yeah, so. Uh and 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 the other difference that I see here is that they mainly focus on applying the skills. Uh not really, you know. You know, sticking into the textbook and getting all the knowledge like it's, you learn the concept and you apply. Uh that's another difference, right? Hmm and also this opens up for for independent thinking. Uh they are they are trained from from very young age, they are trained to think independently, take their own decisions. Uh you know, evaluate their decisions, whether they are right or wrong, how can they improve? That sort of guidance is given. Um and that's a major difference compared to our country. Hmm, yeah, I hope I I answered your question.
Thank you so much and if you don't mind, may I request you to stop staring?
Hello, sir, my name is Kumar Swamy, I am tenth grader. May I ask you a question?
Yes, please.
A question is, how do you increase creativity and problem solving through computer project among your students?
Uh yes, Kumar Swamy, uh what we do is like, we mainly go through activity based questions, projects, project based questions. Uh so even even what you just saw earlier was was a graphical, you know, lesson. Where they had to go through a project, they started by creating an icon and then went on to creating a logo. And then ultimately, an illustration. So we also link these activities along with some other subject areas, like for example, business. So the IT lessons are connected with business, for example, when they design a logo, they need to look at the. Uh the purpose of the logo, right, it's representing a brand, it's related to a business, so what's the purpose? How can they make it effective, so those analytical skills are are, you know, combined with with the activities, not just. You know, giving a question and getting the answer, right? Uh we also do pair projects, we join the students, we pair them, we put them into groups. Uh so they learn how to work in a teamwork and then share their, you know, experiences, knowledge, right, respect each other. Um and also, uh we link their projects or activities into real world scenarios. Even when coding, we ask them to create their own coding related to a real world situation like maybe. Maybe a billing system or maybe a ticketing system, something like that. Um and also, we don't really look at the content of the knowledge, we look at, you know. Uh the critical knowledge, we look at the critical knowledge and then we let them apply the critical knowledge. So we are not overloading them with the with too much content. And then we support them, we we do the scaffolding, we support them until they are independent on their own to apply those critical knowledge. Uh that critical knowledge that they gain, right? Um and also, uh we create, always create the extension task. So that they would, you know, try their best to reach a higher level. Without really, you know. Limiting them to a certain standard, so let's say we have thirty two students in the class. Let's say there will be always like few students, like maybe five students who will. Complete that task pretty quickly and they want to learn something new. So we always have an extension task ready for those students so that they can reach the next level. Right, I hope I answered your question.
Thank you so much and here is Akbar, Akbar, go ahead and ask the question.
Akbar, right, yeah.
Good afternoon, sir.
Good afternoon, Akbar.
I'm a ninth grader from VJHS Penemaka.
Okay.
With your permission, may I ask you a question?
Yes, please.
How do you adapt your teaching methods to help, how do you adapt your teaching methods? To help students from diverse cultural and linguistic backgrounds in your computer classes?
Yeah, uh so to adapt my lessons, what I do is, Akbar, like taking into consideration of. Thousand three hundred students and sixteen different nationalities. Uh so we use techniques like, you know, mainly the breaking down the instructions. Uh when we give instructions, we have to be really explicit or really spot on with the instruction. Uh to avoid any distractions. And then usually our lessons are based on these slides, just like what you saw in my presentation. Usually we put everything into a slide and we design the slide show, breaking down the content. And then we need to include what is known as dual coding, which means like not just text, but pictures, animation, video, things like that. Uh during this process, there will be a lot of technical words, new terms coming up. So we need to give them the explanation, the the meaning of those, that's another way. And then obviously, we need to identify the students who need support, so what we do is we give one to one support. Uh now there's an interesting thing here, which we don't see in our countries. Uh any student who needs support has a plan. It's already decided, it's already decided and they have a specific plan. So we are asked to go through that plan and we had to cater our lessons to support that plan. So when they come into my lesson, I know exactly how to cater individual students because I have read their plan. Right, so what kind of support I should give, right, what kind of materials I should give to that child? Should I keep that child in front of the class or in the at the back of the class? Everyone has, I mean, I mean, majority has that plan, especially the ones who need the support. So that really helps, that really helps these students to progress. And then especially with the students who need some medical support. Uh we have what is called teaching assistance, so those are this, those are the. Uh uh you know. Ones who help the teacher and bridge the gap between the student and the and the teacher. So they assist these these students, so we can guide them. Okay, we can tell them like, okay, this is what we are teaching today, you be with him and just guiding because there are there are students who. Whose handwriting is not good enough, who can't type fast, you know, in the computer, so they need extra support. There are students who can't read the board from a distance, there are students who are colorblind. There are students who need the filters on the screen, color filters, so we need to cater everybody. So that support plan is amazing, that is something we didn't have in our country.
Thank you so much, yeah, so you are you are talking about inclusive education system, inclusive.
Exactly, inclusive, yes.
Students in one classroom.
Yes.
Is it possible to cater to the needs of all the students within the stipulated time of forty minutes or fifty minutes? Because you have a lot of things.
Exactly, that's. Yeah, that's that's a good question. Uh well, we have a, we have a, we have lessons running for fifty five minutes, actually, one, one hour, almost one hour. One hour, but usually fifty five minutes will be usable because they take time to come in and, you know, settle down. Uh but. Whereas in my country, we had only forty forty minute periods, so this one hour period is quite sufficient, sir. Uh but as I told you, like, we are not really looking at the content. But it's it's that delivery of the of the content and the effectiveness of it. So we are not really like, I I mean. Not really with GCSE and exam classes, right? Uh there, of course, we need, we have a tight schedule, but seven, eight, nine, we don't really try to cover the syllabus. It's mainly breaking down and, you know, supporting them and gradually building up that progress. So as you as you told you, yeah. One one period is not enough at all, so sometimes with some classes, with some classes, it may run for different amounts of periods. But with some some better classes, we can, we we don't need much time. So it depends on the classes as well.
Okay, Praveen, over to you.
Yes, Praveen.
Good afternoon, sir.
Good afternoon, Praveen.
My name is Praveen Kumar, I am a ninth grader from GBHS Penemaka.
Okay.
May I ask you a one question, sir, with your permission?
Yes, please.
How do you prepare?
How do you prepare your students for future careers in technology or computer-related fields?
Yes. Um, so, so far what I have seen, like, uh, within these two years is that, uh. We often, like in our lessons, Praveen, like, uh, we tell them the importance of, uh, learning these concepts. We tell them like, uh, how it links to their future so that they understand the value of, uh, learning these concepts. So that's one way. And then, uh, we try to, uh, link what they learn with the other subjects. Like for example, uh, when I explain coding, I try to link it with maths. How maths is involved in coding and how, uh, coding is related to maths. So then they, they'll be able to relate it to the other subjects as well. And then they know like, okay, I, I can't be learning only computer science. I need the maths as well. So they know the importance of the other subjects, the combination of the subjects. And then, uh, we have after-school clubs, like we have the coding club, we have, uh, uh, you know. I T club, uh, different types of clubs. We have competitions after-school, uh, clubs for com- competitions like, uh. We have an annual competition called Lego Club, uh, Lego Competition, Mindstorm. Uh, so extracurricular activities are there to promote the subject and, uh, you know, make them fond of the subject. Uh, then we also expose them to, uh, guest lectures. So there are people coming from, uh, various, uh, industries to talk to them during, uh, assemblies and things like that. And then, uh, here they have colleges. They have colleges and they have universities. So there are people from colleges, uh, colleges are like vocational training centers. So they come here and they demonstrate, uh, uh, you know, their courses and things like that. And that's when they start to think about their future. Uh, whether they go, uh, whether they take the college or whether they go for the university. So university is also coming and they have their open day sessions where the, where the students can go and talk to the universities and. Try to find out the importance of the subjects and, uh, plan their subject combinations for future. So a lot of career guidance is, uh, given within the school. Uh, but the other thing I had to tell you is like, it's not only. Uh, the education that they are looking at, uh, they do various activities to promote, uh, things like, uh. You know, uh, soft skills, uh, you know, things like, uh. Uh, to build their, uh, personality, right? And also they promote, uh, sports. So it's like, uh, kind of a full package, like non-alien education, sports. Uh, clubs and, uh, uh, these soft skills as well. So for example, uh, I'm a class teacher. So every morning we have a session for class, for, for my class, for all the classes, right? All the class teachers have a session for their class, uh, which takes around twenty minutes. So within the twenty minutes, uh, we'll be talking about things like, uh, uh, you know, uh. Things like soft skills, uh, like, uh, determination, uh, you know. Uh, how to respect others, right? Uh, uh, teamwork, right? All these things we discuss like, so that's also part of their learning. So every day they start their, uh, day's lesson with something like that. So that's how, uh, they are being, you know, prepared for the future. It's not only the education, but it's an overall, overall, uh. Learning experience. Yep?
Thank, yeah, what subjects are taught to these students?
Okay, okay, okay. Yeah, uh, so, uh, first question, uh, what subjects are taught? Uh, well, uh. For me, of course, uh, it's, uh, quite similar to what we taught, uh, back in my country. Uh, because we, we were actually following, uh, British curriculum there. Uh, so they learn maths, science. Uh, English, uh, computer science, uh, history, geography. Uh, then, uh, ethics, uh, as well, catering, uh, D N T. Hmm. Then bit of, uh. I'm not really sure what exactly it is called, uh, you know, like, like things like carpentry. Uh, woodwork, things like that. And, uh. Art, music, dancing, uh, languages, languages has a, has, has a great demand. Especially, uh, Spanish has a great demand. Uh, yeah, those are the main, main subjects that.
Yeah. Is it, is it possible to teach all these subjects as you have told that each period consists of, uh, one hour, sixty minutes? So when do they start? When do they end? To cover all these subjects?
Um, yeah, so, uh, the interesting thing is like, uh, they have only five, uh, periods for a day, only five periods, uh, with two breaks. Uh, whereas I remember in my previous school, we had, uh, eight, eight periods. Uh, and, uh, they start at eight-thirty. They start at eight-thirty and finishes, uh, at three-thirty. So eight-thirty to three-thirty, they have five periods, two breaks. Uh. So certain subjects are co-subjects where they need to do, like maths, science, English, uh, and I T also. Uh, but other subjects are selective.
So, so one more question that I would like to ask you. And, uh, in India and Sri Lanka, we have very limited resources. Uh, to upgrade the skills of the teachers. That means we have, uh, very less, less exposure. Uh, when it comes to the upgrading our skills and while continuing our career in public schools.
Yes.
Uh, but how about the schools in UK? Do you have any professional courses or is there any? Day that is designed just for the, uh, I mean, uh, upgrade, upgrading the skills of that particular teacher or something in the particular field?
All right. So you, uh, you, you, you mean the teacher, right? Upgrading teacher skills, yeah?
Yeah.
Yeah, uh, there is, there is, uh, because, uh. Uh, so one thing I noticed was like, uh, when I arrived here, uh, and started, uh, teaching for the first few months. Uh, they approached me. They approached me and they asked me like, would you like to enhance your skills? Now, obviously, I'm, I'm, I was not qualified to teach here in the UK. So they wanted me to, uh, get qualified first. And they, they asked me like, uh, so that, that was a really nice thing. Like I, I didn't have to look for it. They approached me and they asked like, would you like to, uh, improve your skills and, uh, uh, you know, get qualified? Right? So I, 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 I took it. It was a challenge, but I took it. I accepted it, uh, uh, you know, with great, uh. Uh, gratitude because, uh, they offered me. So, uh, then, uh, it enabled me to, uh, you know. You know, get adapted to this system, this new system. Other, otherwise it would have been really difficult for me because, uh, it's a. There are so many differences between the two systems. Uh, and even right now I'm in the training, uh, uh, period. Uh, I had to continue for another one and a half years to be fully qualified. Uh, so, yeah, they, they, they do offer, they do offer and then we have these seminars, conferences. Uh, uh, online meetings. Uh, there's a lot of C P Ds, uh, there's a lot of C P D. Every Thursday we have a staff meeting, uh, which is, uh, to enhance the. Skills of the teachers, uh, to have some C P D sessions. They put us into teams, uh, we get together and, you know. Uh, there are, uh, you know, practical sessions, uh, there are modeling sessions, like we had to. You know, in front of the team, we had to model certain, certain things, right? That's, uh, that's really interesting and, uh. Uh, so we get used to share ideas and work together with, you know, different nationalities, right? Especially, uh, from different countries. Uh, yeah, so there's a lot of opportunities to learn.
Yeah. End of this session, may I request you to give a message to my students, suppose some of the.
Oh, yeah, 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 sure, sure. So, uh, the message I can give you is like, uh, well, uh. I, I got this opportunity because I tried, I tried hard, uh, and, uh, I looked, I looked for opportunities. Uh, I didn't wait for the opportunity to come to me. I looked for the opportunity. So you. So the message I can give, uh, you, you, your students is that, uh, you look for your opportunities, uh, search, right? So the world is connected, the world is connected with the internet, right? So now see, we are, we are like, how many, like maybe. Seven, eight thousand kilometers apart and then, like, we feel like we are in the same room. So the world is connected. Get the best out of the internet and, uh, search, search for information, right? Now even these students, they are really lucky to, uh, get connected online right now because they have the internet connection, they have the phones. So that's really, really, uh, a great opportunity. So use that, use that wisely. Find out what the world is, uh, about, uh, where is it going towards to? What are the opportunities out there, right? Opportunities can be, uh, outside your country, can be within your country. And grab those opportunities and try. Uh, you may not be successful, but keep trying. And you never know when the luck finds you.